Thank y'all for attending tonight our eight and second two thousand nineteen local commissioners meeting. We always like to open with an invitation, so bow your heads please. Dear Lord, we come to you and thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you, Lord, for the freedoms that we have to have meetings like this in this great country. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us today, yesterday, and the blessings that come. Lord, give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for this county and to do it in expeditious manner. All these things will be answered in a minute. If you would stand with me for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the regular session of March the nineteenth, twenty nineteen, the complaint update work session of March nineteenth, twenty nineteen, and the call session of March thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
And there's a second. Are there any, is there any discussion or any changes to the minutes before we vote? No changes in our discussion? All in favor of approval of those minutes for those three meetings? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our appearance of citizens. We have two citizens who would like to speak from the board tonight. We have Kelly Reynolds, for going trash pickup solutions. Would you come down front?
Yes, can I bring my luggage?
Sure. Does it sit anywhere? At the table? If you would give Mr. the name and address.
Yes.
And you will have five minutes.
Yes. Kelly Reynolds, eight five nine Shenzoah Drive, Catawba.
And what would you like to share with us?
I've got prepared.
Okay. Great.
First, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. A little about me. My name is Kelly Reynolds. I served in the US Army for nine years as air traffic controller. I'm a University of North Texas alumna with a degree in political science and an emphasis in free law. My husband and I bought a home in Catawba in January of eighteen where we plan to raise our two kids. In Catawba, there's an abundance of trash on the sides of the road, specifically on every route I take from my house leading to Highway twenty seven or Interstate one eighty-five. It is evident that this current trash removal system is unsatisfactory. Furthermore, the system is crippled by a littering law that is nearly impossible to enforce because of our country's large land size. In the past two years, Harris County Sheriff's Department has only issued two littering tickets. The current trash system eliminates nearly all citizen responsibility. We have taxed one small annual trash fee and given a recommendation on how to contain our trash on trash day. I would like to mention my top three concerns. First, loose trash will drive away potential home buyers while yielding lower house prices resulting in less taxes paid to the county. Second, all loose trash will eventually end up in the ocean via our creeks and rivers. Our oceans are currently in a crisis. Seven million tons of plastic end up in our oceans each year. Florida is experiencing this phenomenon. At least two hundred linear miles of reef in the Florida coral reef trapped are now riddled with disease. A Stanford professor was quoted saying, "What we're doing in the next decade can mean that for two million years, there are no coral reefs in the ocean." Our oceans absorb carbon dioxide. If we continue to ruin our oceans, we will simultaneously ruin our ozone layer and threaten our own extinction. Third, and lastly, we are failing to shepherd our future generations to value the earth and to be responsible earth citizens. Solutions I've prepared for the board. At first is a form of our municipality collaboration. Create an ordinance no longer permitting loose trash in trash cans. Currently, we are allowed to mix loose trash with bagged trash in our residential cans. Trash is most likely to end up on the street during removal process if it is loose rather than securely inside of a waste bag. Create a radius of responsibility. Ordinance, ordinance requiring residents to pick up all loose trash in a twenty-five-foot radius around their trash pickup spot. This should be a ticketable fence. After all, it is de facto littering. Perhaps the most controversial solution is create a copycat Utica blue bag program. Charge ninety-five cents for a small blue bag and a dollar fifty-five for a large. Refuse to pick up any trash not inside designated garbage bags. This will reduce trash on streets while creating a pay-as-you-go trash system. Currently, single family, multiple family, and commercial establishments pay one hundred forty-nine dollars a year for trash removal. My neighbors often have five trash containers to be removed while our family has one. This copycat program would ensure a pay-as-you-use system, not too different from our water, our water system. We don't charge a catch-all one forty-nine dollar a year, one hundred forty-nine dollar a year fee for water use, so why do we do a trash removal? And part D to this, to this collaboration would be to supplement the copycat ordinance with a mandatory recycling ordinance with the intention of selling the recycled aluminum. Second is a collaboration with Petroni Corp. Establish a standing community service trash detail for minor offenses in lieu of jail time. Third, place trash bins at high-traffic areas. A county in Norfolk, Virginia enlisted the service of local artists by allowing them to submit designs. If selected artists were paid a hundred dollars to paint a trash can as part of the county's beautification efforts. And lastly, cameras. Placing ticketing cameras at high tra, in high-traffic areas to assist, assist the sheriff's department in catching littering offenses. In conclusion, change is often inconvenient, however, the cost of not changing is significantly more inconvenient. We are currently at risk of undervaluing our home prices, extinction, extinction of the coral reef, and creating a generation that eliminates personal responsibility for waste.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I wanted to ask you, I did a little research on the copycat Utica blue bag. How does that work?
Well, I think that it would be easiest if we, well, I, my parents live in New York and their system is quite involved. There's recycling portion and there's other fees, but at every supermarket, gas station, or what have you, they sell two sizes of Utica blue bags, a smaller one for ninety-five cents and a large one for a dollar fifty-five. You can buy them in rolls, like cheaper, it's not very expensive, but you put all your trash inside that blue bag and on trash day, the trash people only pick up what is inside the blue bags. So currently, when I call the municipal department, they said you can have up to thirty pieces of loose trash in your trash can, which I think is probably the number one reason that we have trash in abundance where I live on the side of the road. I think that the inconvenience of paying for the bags could really work out to our benefit in the long run. It would clean up the area, it would make response, personal responsibility for our citizens, which I think is our biggest issue because what we have right now is the prisoners picking up our trash and such lax rules. It doesn't give the individual homeowner much responsibility. They just throw their stuff out there and it ends up everywhere else and it's gonna end up in the oceans, it's gonna end up in the rivers, that's where the wind's going to take it. So I think that it's time for some personal accountability.
Well, thank you. I certainly appreciate your passion for this type of thing and on recycling initiative. I've also been a big fan of recycling. And we did a couple of years ago some empty bins into our locations, but they were reused.
I just noticed that, I picked up this trash this morning, I picked up trash before, and a majority of what is on the side of the road is actually beer cans, which is aluminum. And I don't know how you would go about selling that, but I do think that if we put out recycling ordinance and said we're no longer picking up trash or recyclable items, it could be beneficial. We could put that back into the trash system, take some burden off the citizens, but I also think it's important to note that I bag all my trash very nicely and neatly because I feel it's respectful. But one time I put a handful of grass on top and they sure did leave my entire bin for a whole week. So I think that it could be, you know, something that works if the trash people see loose trash, I think that they could keep on going and leave it there.
Well, thank you, dear man. The next item on the agenda under our parish of citizens, Mr. Gary Lowman, who represents the Alabama Road Line Commission.
Good evening. I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to share some facts that I have. You should have my communication of what the issues are. And my family has had this property, I'm Gary Lowman, I'm owner of a little farm in Zon, Alabama.
Okay, your name, address?
Twenty-three, seventy-four, Alabama. So this property has been in my family about seven years. And it was my dad's, and I guess thirty years ago, it happened to find me, and I had to try to take care of the property and amend it. I was, before this commission, I think Gary was on the one that was here at the time, and it's been a long time, about ten years ago, and I had a problem with a neighbor that wanted to park a jump truck, an asphalt type of a bin and a trailer right on the side of the road in front of my home. And it was a difficult thing to remove because we're no laws. So thankfully, this commission made a ruling, it went more like the state, which take just twenty-four hours on the side of the road period. The county said they did four weeks because they didn't have it for it and had resolved that issue of parking and leaving things there. Even school buses, school buses parked there all the time. But the school district took care of that, they put them. But what we have now is a problem that was created years ago when my dad sold a piece of his property on the west side and I'm on the east side. Whenever he had the property, there was no county road, there was just a dirt road. And so over time, they gave up the property because it would be better for a paved road and the county was still gonna have a paved road. So the rightways went away with it, they had both sides. So whenever the property was sold, it was sold first of all on a couple of five, eight tracts, which I think was the metal. And then there was one last piece that was sold that was about nine or ten acres or something. And that person who bought that was going to make that his home, on ten acres, and it was a condo. Well, right after the deed was done, he decided to build houses and he came to this commission and got an exception for that one road in Harris County. Then those lots are on, I'm gonna say less than two acres, some of them maybe less than half, two acres or less. So whenever you do that, you take like nine, I think there's nine homes compacted in that area, you create a little bit of a problem because there's, we're a rural community. So you have room to park cars, you have room to park a tractor, whatever you have according to how much property you have, there's not that much room in this property. So what happens is the, the east side of the road becomes a part of the west side of the road, the county road. On my side, I had cleaned off the road when I put up a fence, I set back, I believe it's eighty feet from the center line. It may be sixty, sixty or eighty feet, but I'm set back with a fence to that county maintenance, maintenance program. Yeah, the west side of the property is not that, the stuff that comes to the road. Now, I did a plan that I'm here for now. The reason for that plan was to try to create a solution of the problem. I have neighbors that move in and out. The property's gonna be sold or foreclosed, people move in and out, so I get different problems at different times. The main problem is parking. It's used as a parking center for the upside. So I tried to plan something that discourages parking. There's also like the lady, before we talked about trash, most of the trash is on trash day on Friday. And some people may have loose trash in their can and when they pick it up, it may just end up on the ground and it's east, it's bleak wind that comes through. So whatever is lost out of that can, it's loose, it's flowing easterly. And it's just a bobbard fence, so most of the time, we have to go and collect all the trash on the road. After that, even trash cans flow over the way it's gonna come together. But they also flow from there all the way through the property. So I'm asking for help and how to live in this situation. Maybe even an inception would help me because if you came and looked at this property, I sent pictures, you will see I'm the only spot in this entire county, unless you're in a subdivision, that has an issue like this that's about, I have about, maybe a mile of, right, all of it's right in front of my property. So I, I gave you some solutions that I had thought about. Create an inception for me to do something there, what I had planned to maintain that. I talked to George Power today and they agreed to that. If I maintain it, they don't want anything. I'm looking at like eighty feet height, it's kind of okay, that I would maintain, it was fine. And if we do anything to my side to say that I need to remove things, I'd like to say we should do the same thing to the west side to clean off the same eighty feet that I made. So this thing really applied. And I had another thought from someone else that gave me this thought. Maybe a parking problem would be just post no parking signs along the area in front of me to stop some of this and leave it. So that, that's kind of like some solutions I offered out. Hopefully you can come up with something.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lowman?
How did you speak about that George Power tonight? He actually came by to tell me to remove the trees. And I told him when I was dealing with and he, he was standing there on property and he said, "I can understand your problem because I'm, I'm pretty well maintained." And I said, "You know, all I'm trying to do is live a life there without hassle." And I said, "You see how I maintain things? I wouldn't, I'm using it more as a hedge that would be no more than eighty feet. I'll be responsible." He said, "Okay, I see you're a responsible person, I'll take it as that if it ever gets out of hand, we'll just take it all back."
Because I talked to George Power as well and they seemed to have an issue with the I didn't talk to George Power about you maintaining a hedge at eighty feet. And their main concern was if you had a tree that's over fifteen feet. But I'm not going to talk to George Power then. They just had a, they had a fairly large concern with that. And then also some of the trees planted right in front of their power poles and blocking access. In the future, blocking access and keeping them far enough off the pole that it might be an issue, especially if there's another, heaven forbid, another tornado or bottles are broken, you know, and they have a hard time accessing those trees. They didn't have, had the trees, if they're not, well, their power poles wanted to get to them. One question that I've talked to George Power as well. Had a little different side to it, we did not discuss.
Well, it was fair to that. But I guess I'm just asking for a solution. Because it's, it's really a hindrance that they would have made an inception of this type years ago. And here we are today, this is probably four years ago, I'm close to the time. But that we're here today and it's, it's a continual problem. So I'm just asking for something that I can, I don't bother if I put this up. It seems to all be on my side and I don't know what it is, but it's why I open, so it's open there.
What kind of trees are?
There are, there are legrand cypress. So legrand cypress can grow to, I guess, two and thirty feet. So it's not hard to maintain if you get a saw and a tractor and you just buzz them off the same.
So you just cut them, have you already cut them?
No, I just plant.
Oh, okay.
Why didn't you plant them? I rode out there Saturday and took a look because I was curious. And I saw that you planted some, they're actually in the ditch, they're in a ditch area. My concern there is if they grow up, even if you keep them as a hedge, water's gotta run off. If it gets in there and it gets dammed up with leaves or whatever, then it sends the water across the road. And as a person that's hydroplaying on a road, cause waters across the road, I'd be concerned that that may cause a hazard. You know, why, why would you not put them up closer to your fence? I understand what you're talking about with your hedge, but I would have put it closer to the fence. So I'm assuming the solution you want is to make sure nobody parks on your property, so that's why you put the trees closer to the road. It's not closer to the fence.
That, that is parking, but also that is a flooding. Where those houses are, it used to be a lake that we had, did the water run off from the road and actually kept that lake. And it still fills that side behind the house. I don't know how they, they're close to flooding whenever it rains. So what that would do is help with root system, there's not even leaves from a cypress tree, but it would help the drains, the roots would help all that water to collect. And if you look at the drain and, and after a rain, you'll see a house across the street from that drain, it's got water all through its backyard and it's coming down that, that ditch system. So that's part of the reason was to help maintain that soil because if they're done in there, it's very soft because it stays on that.
Is there an issue or a problem with waiting until Mr. Zern can talk to George Power?
No, it, this, I think as much as it could be as much as anything, it's code enforcement for people parking in the rightway and whatnot. We have court and have some ordinances that prohibit it and if we, you know, go out there and force them to issue a few tickets, that may, that may start some of them, but yeah, I think you could probably, you could put your trees on the inside of your fence, could you not?
Well, I could, but it would not.
It'd still be blocked, it'd block your view of these unsightly houses.
That, that would, you're correct. But it wouldn't stop the problem. And what, what happens is, I would suggest that Mr. New, Mr. McGrady and Mike go out there and take a look at it and see exactly what, what we do.
We had it. Yeah, we both looked at it.
Do y'all have any other issues?
Yeah, mine, we, the way it first come about for me was I was contacted by a couple of citizens in the very beginning, some anonymous. And then before I could even get a chance to get out and take a look, Mr. McGrady called me about it. And I go out and look and actually the, I think the very first time I went out, it was only pine trees. There's pine trees and legrand cypress. And the pine trees were there first. It's, it's about a half a mile of road from us, but actually a little over half a mile. And they're staggered along than they are in the ditch line. The, the rightway's eighty foot, it would be forty foot from the center line. The fence is actually six inches past the forty foot mark, which is perfect. The trees are seventeen foot off the edge of pavement. My first concern would be, they should be there in first place because this is county rightway. The second concern would be our trees grow, as we all know, huge. It might not be a concern of mine, but one day later, some public works, it could get sued over someone hitting the tree that was allowed to stay on the rightway. Now granted, we have trees all over the rightso way. And the prison crews, detail crews, and public works work hard all the time clearing these rightways. We can clear a road from one end to the other, all the way to the rear of the rightway. Three years down the road, sweetbun trees and pine trees are already backed up. It's an ongoing, ever-ending fight. As far as it being in the ditch line, I see that as a problem. I spoke with Mr. Lowman on the phone and I, I told him that I could even to, maybe not to leave all the time, you know, because he probably don't want signs out in front of his home, but to put some no parking signs out, just to get the point across and then go from there. I've been out several times looking. We do need to keep the rightways free of any of that. It's in the ordinance that even, you know, before a road's accepted, it should be free of debris, trees, any obstructions before the commission even consider accepting the road. Now, I don't know if the ordinance has changed or what, but it is in there at this time. The, I'm scared, certainly at all times, you know, people look for an exception or, or whatever. Sometimes that just breeds more exceptions and before long, we don't have a rightway in town. I feel like the, you know, it, even if we had to speak to the neighbors and say, "Hey, don't park," but at the same time, the rightway is the rightway. People park on the rightway everywhere. I understand exactly what Mr. Lowman's speaking about, but in my point of view, I need to keep the rightways cleared and we need to continue to try to clear the rightway all the way back as we've been doing over the years. It's gonna take a long time doing what's there around the county all over now, but we don't need to let new things happen as we see them and they're brought to our attention. That's pretty much how I'll stay with you.
Mr. McGrady, can you give me your comments?
No, basically, just like Mr. Brown indicated, I'm the one that received the complaint and I was a former resident that lives in that area across the street and brought to my attention. I turned, went to Mr. Brown, we looked at the situation. A lot of our ordinances sticking outside the box, a lot of our ordinances, even if you look at the sign ordinance, mailboxes and everything else which are structures, you know, they all indicate a location which are all off the rightway with some, with exception of mailboxes. You know, it's just like if you sign ordinance indicates ten foot away from the property line into the property. You know, we're not trying to, Mr. Lowman, we're not trying to get your trees gone. It's the same, you can't have trees. It's just the placement of the trees, you know. Inside fence line, no problem at all, you know, it's just that county rightway, that's the issue. That's not the issue of no trees. You can have as many trees as you want.
Well, even if you put the trees up by the fence, that would still be on the rightway because the fence is only six inches.
It's hidden, six inches hidden, right away.
Got, I got.
I measured several places just to get a bearing on what's going on. The most places that I measured, the fence was actually six inches on Mr. Lowman's property. There is a plant, I'm not gonna say the, the entire length of the property, there's some places where it actually falls off into the property. I know around the driveway area, there, it kind of goes uphill. It may be hard to plant on, on that slope that close to the fence and, and come out good, you know, with a good tree. I don't, I, I just feel like, you know, I wish the trees were on the inside of the fence or wherever other than on the rightway. Eighty foot is an exceptional rightway for the county. We have, we have a lot of them, but we have a lot more sixties and even some forties and even back, I know that the history is different. One of the most important things for the, for the rightway are, we have utilities. Now, there may not be no utilities going out through there at this time, but the future there may be.
There's, there's a phone cable.
On that side. And I think the water's on the opposite side of this connection. And the water's usually one of the biggest issues because when there's a break, I, I know the water department don't wanna go out and clear trees to fix the break, then you're dealing with a whole nother scenario. But at some point in time, we could have utilities, more utilities going. And there was a time when we was doing fifty-foot rightways and we found real quick that we didn't have enough room for utilities on some of the roads, that's why we went back to sixty. And that's almost slim at, you know, there. But I think the, the main thing is safety, you know, you get the, the legrand cypress, they, I've got some at my place, they go, you know, wide and big and we don't want any site destructions out there or anybody hitting them. And of course, everybody goes, are those just regular southern pines?
No, no, we are, we are different. I can't, one of them are, they're not southern pine.
Was the complaint that was brought to your attention, was it about his trees or was it about them not being able to park on his side of the property?
No, it was a reference to trees being planted in the county rightway.
And so the claim was he planted trees in the county rightway?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's why I was just wondering what, how the complaint actually came about. It was specifically about the trees?
Yes, sir.
The one thing that I pointed out is, by doing that, if you could just give me help to maybe with signs, but also at the same time, the other side of the road that you complained has stuff out to the road. That's part of the problem is they have no, they use the other side as That's part of the problem is they have no, they use the other side as their extra space because they're planted and they have, one has a fence all the way out, like, but then pay attention. And I know you were there and you probably saw that, but it gets even closer as you go down the road because, uh, I, I guess it used to be me property or, or George Kraft or someone, and so they're, they're all problem. So anyway, I just throw that out. Just with the first solution to kind of slow down the problems from the side, this side to my side.
Thank you, Mr. Lowman. You can take that under, under guise permission, the resident will.
Sounds like we need to, if we're gonna enforce the rightway, we need to enforce it all the way down there, both sides of the road.
And part of, and I'll say, and all I said, I was out of the city, part of the problem to me seemed to be is that Mr. Lowman's property, it is a, a bank and it is there. On the other side, it's just you can drive right off the road into their property wherever it's driving or not. So it's, it's kind of less defined of their actual entrance into their property. Where it is, that's actually more of a defined area into the property. So I can see how they kind of, it, it, you know, in some instances when they have gathering wherever Thanksgiving, I can see how some of them kind of park over. I mean, it just happens. I don't know if they're doing maliciously, it just would be happening.
Well, I mean, that's just where it's just based.
Right, that's right.
So they're doing it daily, regularly, you know?
No, it's different ones at different times. And, you know, if you, if you had someone working from your home, I, it, it would just, it's just an annoyance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lowman. I made a note.
Okay.
And we'll get back to it.
Okay. Do you have any time or quick question?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Taylor. On some of my property that I own is on a dirt road and our property line goes to the center line of that dirt road. But on this paved county road, would his property line go to that rightway or would his property line get to that?
Likely it would stop it, it would be off the center line, forty feet off the center line. If it's an eight foot rightway.
It'll stop it.
Right. Yours is, yours is probably an easement road that, you know, and some of them go to the center line, but the county has the right to maintain that road down across your property even though you own it up the center line.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda under O business is the second reading for the application of Mary Anybody Wallace for beer, wine on premises and distilled spirits by the drink at two nineteen on the lake located at forty five Bonny Drive. The application reads as follows. The applicant is Mary Anybody Wallace. The business is two nineteen on the lake. Location is forty five Bonny Drive Fortson. The type license is beer and wine on premise, distilled spirits by the drink on premise. The shares on this recommends approval. Community development also recommends approval and the health department recommends approval. Mr. Wallace, are there any comments that you'd like to make? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this application? Does the board have any questions for Mr. Wallace? I will entertain a motion.
We should do approve.
There's a motion and a second for approval. I'll look favor. Your, uh, application is signed and Nancy will need to get with me, all right? Okay. The next item on the agenda, and in business we have two, both are bid awards, uh, for the airport and I believe we have some facilities from Pond. If you'd like to come down and run. The first is the bid award for the airport runway and taxiway crack seal and remarking. The project is in the approved budget and funds will come from the airport enterprise fund. Bids were requested for the runway and taxiway crack seal and remarking and four responses were received and opened on March twenty seventh. Pond and Company is recommending that the, the bid be awarded to Haskell Inc. for the low bid of sixty three thousand seven hundred forty five dollars and forty five cents. That cost breakdown is there are no federal funds available. State funds forty seven thousand eight oh nine and nine cents. Local match is fifteen thousand nine thirty six, thirty six, bringing it to a total of sixty three thousand seven forty five, forty five. Once the county receives the notice to proceed from G DOT, the agreement with Haskell will be executed if approved and the county will issue an NTP to Haskell. They will have thirty days from the date to complete the work. Is there anything that you'd like to share?
Hey, bye-bye.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions on this view? Is there a motion?
Clarification, Chairman. Appears in the, uh, that this one and the next one are actually, while they're separate projects, they're actually included, both are included in the, uh, resolution that we have to approve.
Correct.
So I don't know whether you wanna discuss both of them or withhold it during the resolution till we approve the bid.
So, um, can we, can we set, do these separate? Yeah. And then we can put all the resolutions. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
And motion to approve. And is there a second?
I'll say.
Is there any discussion? Does that include the authorization, the appropriate documents to be executed by the appropriate individuals at the appropriate time?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure. I'll lose in favor. Motion is approved. The bid is to Haskell Inc. The next bid is airport fencing phase two. The project is in the approved budget and funds will come from the airport enterprise fund. Bids were requested for phase two of the airport fencing and six responses were received and opened on March the twenty seventh. The, the bids were reviewed by Pond and Company and the recommendation is to award the bid to Piedmont Paving Inc. for the low bid of five hundred sixty seven thousand three hundred forty seven dollars and fifty cents. The cost breakdown is federal funds two hundred eleven thousand two twenty five and one cent. State funds two sixty one, two hundred sixty one thousand two hundred nine fifty one cents. The local match is ninety four thousand eight hundred ninety two and ninety eight cents for a total of five hundred sixty seven thousand three twenty seven fifty. Once the county receives the notice to proceed from G DOT, the agreement with Piedmont Paving is approved and be executed and the county will issue a notice to proceed to Piedmont Paving. You will have one hundred and twenty days from the date to complete the work. And motion and vote to, to award a bid and then we will approve the resolutions that are on the case. Okay. Is there, um, any questions?
I've got a question. This will complete the fencing around the airport.
Correct.
If I recall correctly, the property which we recently acquired on the wet East Room side, we clearing the trees, uh, they might be cleared first, don't they, or the fence?
So the fence, um, is being pushed through the tree line. So the contractor has been told to only clear trees that are in the way of putting up the fence. Um, so it's gonna be selective clearing through there.
Okay, so it's not part of the flyaway approach?
Yes, I mean.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion to approve and a second, I'll lose in favor. And then it includes the resolution and the authorization to sign.
Yeah, that's not the resolution yet.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
Do that, do that.
So is there? Yeah.
Book, 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 resolution for both of those two projects.
Motion is second, I'll, I'll have a vote. Motion is approved. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, Mr. Manager, with your updates.
My favorite part of the review. Um, again, the fiscal year, we're into our last quarter of our fiscal year. And there's a few items that need, that need completion and they are well on their way of completion. Hitting the high points, number four, resurfacing of Lower Blue Springs and Barnesville Road. Again, uh, the contractor should be on site relatively soon and completion for those projects is this May. Number six, various, various county roads, that project is being completed and we are finalizing payments. Number seven, repair, improvements to Mulchel Park, fencing and other improvements are being made and progress has been made as well on improving Mulchel Park and its impairments. Number eight, Elsley Park, um, you know, due to the storm, that park has now made storm debris disposal sign and its development will be delayed indefinitely. At one of the last meetings, you know, we said we'll keep Elsley Park open, you know, for a while to allow, um, private individuals and contractors to use that as a disposal sign. Well, Mike and I believe it is timed out to close that. So we would like to close it for public use, gate it off beginning Sunday, this Sunday night. You know, uh, if the board would like to do that because we're, we're getting a lot of stuff in there, a lot of stuff that is obviously not store damage. And we're getting some construction material that doesn't belong in there. Mike has, uh, left at Elsley Park and he's gone to other things. And so it is more or less left, it's not controlled. So we would like to, uh, give everybody one more chance to use Elsley Park as a disposal site up until Sunday night, since Sunday midnight. And then Monday morning we'll lock it off, gate it off and begin the debris going away process.
Has the state finished? I know we're allowing the state to use that, or have they, have they done pretty much?
I, I will need to contact the state, but from what I see, I, I don't see anything that.
The rightways are pretty clear.
Yes, ma'am.
They were out there working this weekend.
And as far as what's going in the park now, it's really slowed down.
I mean, it's. That's what I was gonna ask you about, how much it's going in every day now.
Very little. It's, it's really slowed down. I go in on occasion and I really don't see anything but skipp. So I think it's, uh, and it's, it's my understanding that they can still haul to the, uh, the transfer station up here in Hamilton as long as there's storm debris still free of charge, correct?
That's right. So we're, basically we're gonna cut off the Elsley Park, but people can still for free take their storm debris to the transfer station during normal hours, um, indefinitely.
In earth, in earth stone, storm debris.
Correct.
Yeah.
Natural vegetation. Well, and that's for free, but they can still take their construction demolition material out there.
Pay for that.
As it always happens.
Yes. Well, you know, we've had a little confusion about that, but, uh, so we need to, when we say that, we need to make sure they understand it's inert.
Yes.
That's free. And you're saying, close it when?
This Sunday about midnight to allow one more weekend of cleaning up, taking Elsley Park, that's convenient, but I think it's time to, to, to close it for public use.
And I would agree with you.
So when do you think the burning would begin?
Well, Mike is think, looking at different alternatives and options, combinations and permutations of burning and or tub grinding. So we're still looking at various options to see which one is the best. And that is coming very soon.
My only concern is, I don't, is the time. Because we have told the citizens that it will continue to be open to some point in time, uncertain, but at some point in time. If we cut it off that fast, even if Andy hits the headlines with it in this week's paper, most people aren't gonna see that till Wednesday or Thursday and you're gonna cut him off by Sunday and they may not have time to get, or the means of, of getting the debris there. I would think maybe another week's delay, but I, I do agree with the plan. I think we have to, certainly we can say we close it and they can take the storm debris to Barnesville. I think that needs to be there. But give us a little bit more time, that's just my opinion.
I would do that. But some people just, they only have weekends to work on.
And if we're to close it this weekend, I mean, you wouldn't be burning anything anymore. So it's not likely.
Or we just, April fourteenth. Let's give them.
Just an extra Sunday?
Yeah. April fourteenth. And give them that rest of this week and then the next week. And that gives them, uh, you know, actually two paper cycles.
It'd be nice if we could put a little sign out there too, as people come in.
Yeah.
That says it would be closed on this date. That way they, you know, a lot of people don't get the paper, they work in towns, they're not really engaged in what's going on in their own community.
So that Sunday is, is the fourteenth.
That Sunday about, they fourteen, we'll put it on our website, put it in a newspaper, put it on our social media sites and post a sign on the, uh, as you enter the park.
All right, that's good. Good point. And then that on April the fourteenth, is, can you work, can you work this way?
It was number eight. Number nine, uh, the Rails to Trails project. Uh, we did get notification yesterday that the federal, the federal, uh, federal fence is released to the county as of yesterday. So we are good to go on the Rails to Trails, the T grant portion. So again, the project should be bid out during June, awarded during July and hopefully completed well before December of this year. And that's like an eleven year project coming to an end. Or maybe a beginning. It's just the end. It's just the, it's the end of the beginning and the beginning of something a lot better. Number ten and twelve, the board approved that tonight, the phase two of the wildlife fence and runway remarking and crack seal projects. Number thirteen, the fly-in is set for May the fourth. There, there's a distribution, um, the flyers are being distributed and there's some of the bags for pickup. That's gonna be a rolling fun event on Saturday, May fourth from ten AM to four PM. All the thanks to Linda Dawson for spearheading that event. Number sixteen, scrap tire amnesty days, April twenty and twenty seventh, those two Saturdays to accept scrap tires for free at the transfer station. Again, Saturday, April twenty and April twenty seventh. And promotional flyers also being distributed and some of the bags for pickup. All funded by, that grant is funded by the state in its entirety. Number twenty, the updated conference of master plan. This, the, the, this document is on the next agenda for approval, April the sixteenth and then submitted to the state. So we're winding down that process. But then we need to start the service delivery strategy portion of that process. Number twenty-two, the day sauce, uh, rewrap stream project, that's been delayed by weather, but it is blowing and going now. And they're not, they're not on track, but they should be getting on track in next thirty or forty-five days.
They're, they're, they're working. I was, I was out there this past week. They're good.
There, there's a lot of equipment up there, they're building a lot of dirt.
They really are.
So. That one is progressing. Number twenty-five, clearing ground thirty-five acres, the Northwest Harris Business Park. We did get the permits last Monday from the state. The project is being bid out. The bid deadline, this is a very, very accelerated project. The bid deadline is April the eighteenth. We'd like, we'd like to have a board, a special board meeting on April the eighteenth for the board to approve the bids that come in, um, so we can hurry this project, get it completed, um, in, in a very timely manner. So the prospective company that is looking. So the prospective company that is looking at it will be satisfied. So that's what we're looking at is, you know, bid deadline of April the eighteenth. Perhaps the board, a special call meeting on that day or the next day, in the afternoons or whenever. At least three board members here, just to keep that project going as fast as it possibly can.
So possibly five o'clock maybe?
Four thirty-five or six, whatever works. Number twenty-six, the prisons, relocking and intercom system, that is progressing, should be finished in this month. As well as the two water heaters, they're being replaced also during this month. So that's basically the highlights. Would there be any questions working out?
Where are we on the, have we heard anything back about the bronze plaque, so we can put it in the media center?
Yeah, we ordered that thing about two months ago. And there was problems with the delivery. You know, what could go wrong, did go wrong, so they had to reorder it. So it's, it's been ordered, it's coming.
There's no cost to us.
At no cost to us. The, the cost is being split between the architect and the general contractor. So we should get that next two weeks, hopefully the.
Set up a time to get it installed and do it.
Right.
Mr. Taylor?
I have nothing, but I do, would recommend that we go into safety section. Briefly discuss pending threat of potential interference.
Anything else that needs to be brought up? Motion to go into a safety session? Come in.
One second.
Motion second. I'll listen to you. Thank you.